Good evening, welcome to the City Council Meeting of Wednesday, November 16th, 2016. Can I have the roll call, please?
Dan Carey.
President.
Peg Coniff.
Here.
Salem Derby. Jennifer Hayes.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Joseph McCoy.
Here.
Daniel Rist.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
We all, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I have a -- oh, we have no minutes here, right?
That's correct.
Public speak time. So if anyone from the public would like to address the council from other -- anything that's not on the public hearings, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Just so there's no misinterpretation, if you speak about something, we can't deliberate because by -- we're held by messages, open meeting laws, and that would be considered a violation because it wasn't advertised. But please, if you want to come up and make a statement about either something in the community or whatever, this is the time to do it. So if anyone would like to come up, this is the time. Just state your name and address. Okay, thank you.
Are you going to let them speak during appointments as we can?
Yeah. But not about something.
Hi, I'm Andrew Goulet. I live at 32 Oliver Street in East Hampton. And I'd just like to thank everyone who went up to the mountain in this past week to clean off the graffiti up there. It was a really good feeling to be up there with a lot of people who agreed that, you know, we need to -- there needs to be a voice for peace in this town. And I'd like to ask the council to consider, along with the mayor, the creation of a Human Rights Commission or something along those lines in this city as a body to be an avenue for people to contact if they experience and are affected by hate speech or, you know, violence, hopefully not, and as a educational body, perhaps a body that works towards more and stronger community in this city by healing fractures, by education, that kind of thing. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who would like to address the council on any topics? Not being that, I will just follow up a little bit on the segue. I know there's a lot of -- there was a lot of conversation amongst some of the councilors about what had happened. And there was a mention, do we reread our discrimination, our resolution pertaining to discrimination and tolerance? And East Hampton and I, I feel like, I trust all these councilors when they sign something, they mean it and they know what they sign. So I don't think there's a need for us to re-vote on this because I believe in the integrity of the councilors we have. But just to reiterate, I will reread it again so it is in everyone's minds. Whereas one of the fundamental core values of the City of East Hampton is to treat all persons with respect and dignity, and whereas the City of East Hampton values all its citizens and recognizes that many ethnicities have contributed to the strength of character of the citizens of East Hampton, and whereas the City of East Hampton recognizes the strength and diversity inclusiveness of its citizenry, and now therefore it be hereby resolved, the City of East Hampton and its representatives shall not condone or tolerate any form of discrimination on the base of race, color, religious creed, age, familial status, national origins, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity or expression, physical or mental disability or veteran status. And that was most recently signed January 4th, 2016. So again, I don't think there's a need to re-vote this because I believe everyone who signed it know what they signed and believes in it. But I think it'd be an appropriate time to restate that. Communications from elected boards and committees. This is also the time where I let councilors, if they have any updates or statements want to make concerning their -- what's going on in their districts. So if there's anyone here, Councilor Hayes? Okay.
First of all, thanks everybody for coming tonight. This is a statement regarding the presidential election and its effect on East Hampton and the state of Massachusetts. This is very bad. It's not a normal turn of events. The Trump campaign said despicable things about women, the LGBTQ community, people of color, people with disabilities, immigrants, Jews, Muslims. And I feel the fear that the incoming administration is generating myself. As an elected official, I will do all I can to protect the rights and freedoms of our citizens. I will support statewide legislation that defends our friends and families. We're a community of inclusion. Massachusetts has led the way for equal marriage, healthcare, and equal rights for the LGBTQ community. And I promise to fight to keep what we have and to continue to work towards full gender equality, pay equity, easing racial tensions. Elected officials from all over the state are getting together to organize. Meetings have already been scheduled to discuss legislation and support each other's efforts. Locally and firstly, I will start the process to create a Human Rights Committee. I agree with Andrew Goulet that we need to have an organization in place to deal with civil rights issues, coordinate responses to hate times, and work with our police force. I'm happy to co-sponsor that with anybody. It's the least I can do to thank Andrew as well as Michael Poole, Tom Peak, Amber Black, Namia Workman, Julian Parker Burns, Henry Amastadi, and everyone who donated their time and energy to clean up the racist graffiti on Mount Tom last week. I want to state very clearly and publicly that bigotry and discrimination will not be tolerated in our community. To those concerned and fearful of what years may bring us, please know that I hear you, that I'm with you, and that I'll fight for you. Thank you.
Any other?
Statements, comments?
Okay.
If I may. I was deeply saddened to see any person in our community feel that they may be threatened or endangered by anyone. I really believe that we were beyond that, that our country had grown, that our city has grown, that our state has grown beyond this stage. It was a long time ago on another continent that the 1930s prevailed. It has no place in the United States of America, what happened across the seas in the 1930s. We live in a different world. I would hope that everyone would stand up, work with our authorities, work with our police to see that everyone stays safe. I would be happy to join you.
Thank you.
I'm a co-sponsor. Thank you. We can move forward. We have a new president. We owe him the responsibility to do our very best to see a safe transition of power in this country. And we need to work vigilantly to see that everyone's interests are protected. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Mayor Communications, Mayor Cager.
I'll be very brief. I know you have a roomful and a lot on the agenda, but Andrew, thank you for coming. And I would like to thank all the volunteers that were up on the mountain that day. Actually, when we got the call, I was Captain Alberti, Acting Chief. We went up to the mountain to view the damage and to thank the volunteers in person. And I think it's important for people to know that this is state-owned property. We've been over this before. Doesn't matter where the damage is. This was in actually Hoy Oaks, the city of Hoy Oak. Doesn't matter where it is. It affects all of us because we all go up there to see the beauty. And taking pictures of the scenery is gorgeous. And then you see the ugly graffiti and, you know, just how disturbing it is and how hateful it is. But it's also important to know that, I know one of the crews had told us when we were up there, Chiefs, that there was a group that had gone up before them to just overpaint everything and whitewash everything, which just added, which just added to the problem because that became even more to take off. So always, you know, notify the, notify your officials in your area so that we can act on it and take care of it. And I know it was moments, it was only moments, when our Acting Chief was on the phone with Hoy Oak and the Environmental Police and the DCR and offered, offered the help of our community also in helping in future with power washers, you know. So we are a community that always lends a hand and always, always rises to the call. So, but where we were coming from was actually a wonderful veterans. It was funny. It was not so funny, but we're coming from a wonderful, it was Veterans Day and the Veteran Services over at the Legion. And I want to make sure that I congratulate again Ernest LaBerge for the, he received the Americanism Award, and James Hickson, who received the award for Veteran of the Year. So it was very odd to come right from there and then head up to the mountain. And then on a much lighter note, I just have an announcement. This happens to be our toy program time. So I want the public to know if anybody is in need of toys this year and lives in East Hampton, you have to be a resident, please just call the mayor's office so that we can get you on the toy program. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Reports of standing committees. Founding and, Councilor Rist.
Yes, first I would like to make a motion to remove, at the request of the mayor, the $9,500 purchase of a rescue boat without prejudice.
Second. Okay, motion second to remove the rescue boat appropriation from the agenda. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
I'd like to do new business first reading. Just for the council's sake, we will move both the ordinance and the pay plan request -- can't find it -- to the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
It's under here.
Right here.
All right. Request is hereby made for the approval for the following appropriation amount requested $19,946 to be appropriated from free cash. $19,946 to be appropriated to the Pay Plan Employee Personal Services. $19,946. The amounts requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for a 1.5 percent pay plan increase. I will move that this be sent, this and the ordinance regarding it will be sent to the Finance Committee for review.
Second. Okay, a motion a second to send to finance, the supplemental appropriation of the $19,946 and the associated change in the ordinance. Any questions, additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
I also move that the aforementioned items, both the refunding and the ordinance, be set for public hearing at our next regularly scheduled City Council Meeting at 6:15 in these chambers.
Second.
Okay, a motion a second to set public hearings about those topics on December 7th in these series, in these chambers. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
And I'd just like to announce that our meeting to discuss the ordinance and the pay plan will happen on Tuesday, November 22nd, as opposed to our normal Wednesday time at 5:00 PM in Room 1 downstairs. Due to Thanksgiving, we decided to make the meeting Tuesday next week. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I think so. We tend to have to hold a schedule with the public hearings before we can finish some of these other comments, subcommittees. So undertake a motion to open the public hearings.
So move.
Motion a second to open public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Councilor Rist.
The first item up is the $100,000 appropriation request from Free Cash for the OPEB stabilization voted three to zero by the Finance Committee to approve. This has to do with retirement healthcare. I'll ask the mayor and/or the finance chairman to speak to it. She's not here.
Chairwoman. Just explain.
So, I'm Melissa Swazki, I'm the Finance Director for the City of East Hampton. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. I believe the council's aware that every year we appropriate money for retirement benefits, for the unfunded liability for retirements for any of us in this room. In addition to our pension, city employees are eligible for health insurance, paid 50% by the city in their retirement. We currently are on a pay-as-you-go status with that. We need to start pre-funding that as we hire new people so that we have a fund to pay the benefits of a retiree that we've prepared for that and invested that money so that those funds are available to pay insurance benefits in the retirement rather than funding it through the appropriation every year. So, we've been doing this for a number of years. $100,000 is slightly more than we've contributed in the last few years, but it is not, not what would be considered the ARC amount based on what we would need to catch up. But I think it's important that we make a contribution to it annually, recognize the expense, and try and do better every year.
Thank you. Question? Mayor did you?
And this is also something that's expected by our bonding authorities. So when we go out to bonding for different projects, this is something that they look to see, that, you know, how you have funded and how you are funding, or if you have even started to fund, you know, your other post-employment benefits.
Was there a question, Councilor President? That maybe the mayor could answer?
Yes, I did. Pay-as-you-go, for those of you who may not know, is a system by which an employee retires and then the new, from that point on, you're paying that person's benefits as opposed to, somebody starts, you're putting, salting money aside for the benefits, and then the person retires and the money is drawn from the previously deposited funds. Finance Director, if you may, just for a moment, you had said that $100,000, it's, let me first say, it's great to see money being put aside at an incremental level that's higher, but I have to ask the painful question of, what is the amount that would be funding us appropriately if $100,000 doesn't?
A million?
Doesn't, a million dollars, would you speak up and say that a little louder?
A million dollars.
I'm not sure everyone in the room heard you.
She said a million dollars.
A million dollars.
A million dollars, yeah.
Famous unfunded liability.
Yep. And that's due to the fact that it hasn't been funded up to this point, so that's part of the catch-up, and that's why it's called the ARC. But, so if we were fully funded, then the normal cost would be, you know, I don't even know, I haven't read the actuarial report in that detail. But just like with the retirement where we have, we fund every year, the normal cost, meaning the amount we should contribute as new employees come in and as people go, then there's also the amount that we're funding that is to make up for not having funded this in the past, so.
So if we had funded it in the past, it'd be much less, maybe 300,000, maybe 200, some number that would be much closer to 100 than, to a million.
I can't say specifically what the number is. I just.
Somewhere between 100 and a million, but it wouldn't be the million that.
Yeah, part of the reason the number is so big is that we have just in the last, what would you say, five to seven years?
Seven years.
Started contributing to this.
It's a new thing, we're starting to contribute. And I know we're not alone. Maybe you could just speak to that.
There are communities that haven't.
Because other communities are in the same boat, there are a lot worse situations. Is that the case?
Well, I don't look at other communities, but there are a lot of communities who are making small contributions and other communities who can afford to just, to just true up. And we're working on a plan for that, but I.
It came, actually, we were at an auditors' meeting for the Mass Auditors this week, and a lot of, and some of the things came up about different communities that haven't started this yet. So this was a requirement that came down with GASP. Sure you're all familiar with GASP. And that's when, you know, the communities started doing it. So we actually did. And, you know, we will continue to, even though I had spoken in the finance subcommittee meetings how $100,000 is painful. So, but this is a little higher than, you know, what we've been contributing the last couple of years, a higher average, and we will continue to do so.
And we see it moving in the right direction. I just wanted to know.
Right. But just so you know, it wasn't always a requirement, and you'll remember when that happened with, you know, companies trying to, trying to fund all their unfunded liability would bankrupt a lot of, a lot of their backs. So, and the same, you're very familiar with the retirement, with the actuarial. We went through that, you know, a couple of months ago. So that, obviously, that's how you work at, at funding it, and, you know, that's.
We're heading in the right direction.
Councilor, when do you get?
Yeah, I'm just gonna pull a little history into it. The forefathers before us, when we had a select board and whatever, way, way back when, when we set up the retirement system, the city didn't put money away for the future retirees as they started to retire, and they were just funding it as they went. So that's where the paper go. And in the meantime, when GASP came in, as the mayor said, the state came down and said, "Well, you know, you didn't fund this liability, so now you're liable to fund it." And so that's where the million dollars comes from. So anyways.
Thank you. So is there anyone from the public who would like to address the council related to this appropriation? Okay, not seeing any. Councilor Rist.
Just like to say that the Finance Committee voted three to zero to fund this. The mayor alluded to the unfunded liability. The scary part, if the state decides to force communities to fund this to full value, we will be bankrupt by it, and so will most of the communities. So I don't think that's coming. Last thing I want to say, since there's a number of employees here, this city cares about its retirees, and that's why this money's being put aside for their, your healthcare. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation amount, I move that we approve this appropriation. The amount requested is $100,000 to be appropriated from free cash. $100,000 to be appropriated to OPEB stabilization account. $100,000 for the following purpose, to transfer funds into the OPEB stabilization account.
Second.
A motion a second to approve supplemental appropriation of $100,000 free cash into the OPEB stabilization. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
The next item up is two items from the CPA. As the Chair of the CPA, I can state quite clearly that both of these items voted unanimously by the CPA to be brought forward to the council. I'm gonna start with this and ask the council to vote on these separately. They were advertised separately, and they are two separate ideas, so separate issues. The first is $12,744. Barbara Bombard isn't here, but we have done this over the last few years to try to get our historic documents properly preserved. We have a lot of old documents in binders that if you touch them, they'll rip, I mean, they're just old, and they need to be carefully prepared and saved. This particular, and this might be maybe the fourth time we've done some of these, this will deal with marriages from 1917 to 1921, and debt certificates from 1941 through 1952. The company called CoFile will be doing the work. They've done it in the past. We've been provided with a budget and a number of items that they will do. I won't read them all, but there's a great deal of work to be done to make sure that these very important records are historically preserved for anyone who wishes to research the history of East Hampton, who died when, et cetera. That's about all I have. Barbara could speak more to it, but she's not here. Yes?
Councilor Rist, so what this does is it takes care of, like, the physical documents themselves. They're re-binding books, they're redoing the paper, they're putting it on asset-free. Is there any opportunity for us to somehow digitalize this so that it's searchable rather than just through a hard copy? Is that a service that this company offers?
We asked that question, everything from 19, I think it was 52 on, was, is being digitized. I don't know about the past documents. That would be at a very large expense. So, yes, it's possible, you can scan anything, but I, we didn't ask for that, and right now the originals need to be protected. So once the originals are protected, you can come in, if you want to research an item, scan it, and you've got it. So it's, it's okay with me that they're doing it this way because we want the originals protected regardless of whether they're going to be digitized in the future.
Yeah, that's valid.
Okay. If there's anyone from the public who would like to address the council on this appropriation, please come to the podium, state your name, address. Not seeing any. I just want to tell the crowd that we have one more appropriation, then I'll move to appointments. So you can make a motion, Councilor Rist.
This motion is simply for the $12,744 to be appropriated from CPA Historic Preservation. I'm sorry, I don't think this is going to be appropriate for me to read them in this way. I'm gonna wait, I guess I have to ask the council's feeling on this. Perhaps we should vote them separately because the, if you decide not to fund the Cook County Road thing, then at least the historic would be appropriate. So I'll move that as part of the CPA appropriation, the following be approved by the council. The CPA Historic Preservation amount is $12,744 to be moved to City Clerk Vital Records Preservation and Restoration, $12,744 to provide funds for the City Clerk Vital Records Preservation and Restoration Project as requested by the CPA Committee and their standing worksheet contract.
Okay, we're motion a second to approve the supplemental appropriation of the $12,744 for vital record preservation. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
The next item is the large item, and there's a number of people to speak to it. The Cook County Preservation Project was something that started many, many years ago. There is a stretch of land in Southampton, and this is a great example of two communities coming together to protect the aquifer that feeds both communities. As we all know, our aquifer is our water supply, and we have some of the best water in the world. This particular land in Southampton is very developable land that is primary recharge area, and I think the Director of Public Works is here and he'll state that as well, that this must be protected against development and the nature of development where you pave and you have fertilizers, pesticides getting into the water. This is also very good land. It percolates very well, so we're gonna get water recharge, we don't want to block it. Now, Southampton has been trying to do this for many years. Finally, the owners of the property, and I guess there's many of them, have decided to fund it with quite a bit of savings. Over $100,000, I think, in savings in the actual purchase of the land. It's being done in two ways, Southampton, and I'm gonna ask Jessica Allen to correct me if I'm wrong. Southampton is paying for the purchase of the land. We are paying for the preservation restriction so that it cannot be developed. I would ask Jessica Allen to come up and clarify all of that I've said to the council for this.
Thank you. Jessica Allen, City Planner. So this is a 25-acre parcel that is right over the town boundary in Southampton. As Councilor Rist said, that this is a property that has been a priority for the city in terms of aquifer protection since 1989. There was a letter that was sent from the then-town to the property owners looking for preservation of this parcel because of its importance in the aquifer. This has been a very complicated deal to put together, and Kestrel Land Trust has been a huge part of pulling this together and bringing all of the pieces together. The finances are complicated. Southampton has already appropriated their portion of the CPA funds. There is a land grant that is currently being reviewed at the state level that would fund a portion of the project as well. And the idea was to sort of split it in thirds, that the grant would pick up, $400,000 is the most that we can ask out of that grant. Southampton has already appropriated $386,862.50, and we are looking for $343,762. And quite frankly, we're getting a huge deal because the conservation restriction value is valued at around $900,000. So we are going to hold the restrictions, we're gonna be able to sort of set the standards of what can and cannot happen on that property to make sure that we're not gonna be contaminating the water supply in any way, shape, or form. The town of Southampton felt really strongly about owning the land itself and opening it up to a public open space. So they're gonna own the land, we will own the CR. And that's how the deal has been constructed at this point.
Okay. And the mayor? Yeah.
I think one quick note, that's very interesting, that came up in our finance subcommittee, was if you look back at the correspondence of us trying to protect the aquifer on this, you know, very important land, letters were going back and forth from the city planner, our former city planner back in like 1989. So this is not a quick thing, this is a long time coming. This is something that we've been working on a long time, and we're always very grateful to property owners when they take this route versus developing it at usually a higher price. So we're very pleased, and I know that this was a very important, I'll have Joe speak because I know this was very important for the Board of Public Works to protect our aquifer.
Good evening. Joe Kaczynski, Director of Public Works. This is something that, like Jessica said, we've been working on a long time. It is very important to the Board of Public Works, it's very important to the Department of Public Works, sits right over our aquifer, as she said. We all know what happened to our aquifer in the past. We've gotta do what we can to protect it. We've got a $2 million treatment plant there now that was a result of something that happened in another town, but we ended up paying the price for it. So if we could do something to. So if we can do something to protect it, even protect part of it, I think it's a wonderful thing to do.
Okay, thank you.
We also have Mr. Mark Walmsley from the Kestrel Project and I think he's here. He could speak to how this whole project was developed and the budget. You might speak to the contingencies and the fact that there is a grant that the CPA funds will leverage to get this and you're pretty sure that we'll get either the water grant or the land grant, if you would speak to that.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for letting me speak tonight. I, as-
Damon Andrew.
Oh, sorry, Mark Walmsley. I represent Kestrel Land Trust out of Amherst, Massachusetts. I was asked to come on and help coordinate this project a little over a year ago. As people have mentioned, this began way back in 1989 and a number of things have had to happen. The family had to come to the right place and we really had to come up with a structure for the project to make it work. It's a very expensive parcel of land and getting an equitable distribution, both of the costs and with the property interests, was not easy. A lot of smart people tried and weren't able to work it out and we luckily finally were able to. And a lot of thanks goes out to the family, particularly Barbara La Flamme, who's in the audience, who owns the farm. This is her family farm from back in 1891, the family first moved on to the property. There are 11 heirs to this land and she has been coordinating them all and trying to get them to pursue a conservation option. It's a very critical parcel, as you mentioned, over the recharge area of the barns. Not only is it over the recharge area, it's an incredibly developable parcel. If this land isn't protected now, it will be developed into 14 house lots. The option, other than that, is protecting it and having, this is the town of Southampton, develop it possibly into a small park, which could also serve Southampton residents. It's adjacent to the Plains Neighborhood, so there's a very dense East Hampton neighborhood right there. Could potentially be a community garden, but it would be protected and it would serve to protect the aquifer for the city of East Hampton. And again, just to, to mention why this is so important, both the city of East Hampton and the town of Southampton have been awarded best tasting drinking water in the nation because of the Barnes Aquifer. Many people don't know that the town of Southampton relies on the city of East Hampton for their only active backup drinking water supply. And as things get hotter and drier, they have been relying on East Hampton more and more for water. So they take this very seriously. So it's been a challenging product, project, but it's also been a very reaffirming project. The amount of support, both from the residents of East Hampton and the residents of Southampton, has been overwhelming. In May, the town residents of Southampton at their town meeting voted unanimously to support this project. 174 people at town meeting all said yes and that's pretty remarkable and it just shows the value of this. I think it's a project everyone can really be proud of. But again, there's three legs to this project, as Dan mentioned, that need to come together to make it happen. The first one already happened in May, it was Southampton voting to appropriate their CPA funds. Tonight is just the second really huge step of East Hampton appropriating its CPA funds. There is one grant application into the state, a land grant, which if we get funded for that, will provide $400,000. If that falls through, we have a second chance. I am currently putting together a drinking water supply protection grant for $350,000. That's the max we can get out of that. So the contribution of everyone would go up a little bit, but that's why there's a bit of a contingency there. That grant application is due December 6th. Hopefully we'll hear about the land before that, so I don't have to write another, whole another grant, but I will do it if necessary. But the project, you know, again, it is a complex project. East Hampton would be buying a conservation restriction on the northernmost 10 acres of land at the beginning and then they will be donated a conservation restriction on the low, on the southerly 15 acres after the town of Southampton buys that in fee with their money from the grant and from their CPA. I can go through the rest, again, it is, it is fairly complex, but it does work. We've had it vetted by several people. The state actually said, "We're not intimidated by it being complex because it shows that you're probably meeting all the regulations, legal requirements, you're jumping through all the hoops." Sometimes it has to be complex. So we're confident in it, we've had a great response from everyone we spoke to. So thank you very much for considering it tonight and if you have any additional questions, feel free to ask.
Just want to let, let the council know, you are very confident that the land grant and/or the water grant will be approved because if it's not, the deal falls through.
You're right, the deal does fall through if that happens. As much as I can be certainly, I mean, it's a worthwhile project, it checks off a lot of boxes and we have, you know, every time we've spoken to the state, we have reassured them and told them about its history and how important it is to the two communities. I think they realize that, they're, they're very impressed that the two communities have been working together for so long, especially with so many obstacles and challenges to make it work. So my fingers are crossed and I'm very hopeful.
So the council knows both communities CPA funds are not spent unless the grant is approved, so there's a contingency there for that.
Correct.
Questions?
Any questions?
Just a quick question. In terms of the conservation restrictions, I heard a couple of different things and heard that there would be one conservation restriction and then I think I heard, Mark, you say that there were two conservation restrictions which would differ from, I think, what our planner had said.
We have to break, yeah.
A conservation restriction.
We had to break them up just simply because the value of the parcel was so high. So basically, we, we had to, if the city of East Hampton wanted to just purchase a conservation restriction on this property, it would be around $960,000. So we had to make it work out, we, again, we had to just split it into different acreages with one purchased conservation restriction and then one donated conservation restriction, which the town of Southampton would be required to donate that, that conservation restriction after they use CPA funds and a state grant. It's a requirement for them to pass that along to some outside entity. So you would eventually be merging two of those, they would be two separate documents. They could essentially be identical, actually. You could negotiate them at the same time and have the same language and it would be a negotiation between the city and the town with some requirements put on by whatever state grant is, you know, awarded, you know, they like to, and they would like to obviously review the conservation restriction, make sure it sticks by state standards.
I guess in part, a couple of the reasons why I'm asking is how the land gets used would be defined by that conservation restriction, the type, the various types of uses, parks, trails, birding, whatever, whatever the ways are. And in the past, this council had always been involved in conservation, in accepting conservation restrictions. Is that the case here?
Yeah.
In the past, conservation restrictions have gone through council, I did look at the past councils. So this is about the appropriation.
I understand. That's why I'm asking now.
So, so the next piece, if this all comes together, is yes, there would be a CR that would have to likely go through council process and have signed off, not only by council, but by Southampton and Conservation Commission, or I mean, the Department of Public Works, Board of Public Works, because they're probably going to be the entity that oversees the CR for East Hampton and the state. There's a lot of signatures that go on that document.
Right. Just wanted to be sure that that was the process.
And just, just to clarify, there is a negotiation involved with that, once this is done, that our planner is intimately involved with, to make sure that we agree with uses on this property.
Right, absolutely. Good, thank you.
I just wanted to thank the families and the heirs for working with Southampton on the price of the property. Giving fresh, clean drinking water to thousands of people is a pretty munificent gift. So thank you.
Anyone from, anyone else from the city side? Just a second, I just want to check city side, is all done? Okay, now anyone from the public who would like to address this appropriation? And it looks like there's a bunch of you, so if you could try to keep your comments to about a minute or two, that would be terrific. But again, for the record, just state your name and address for the record.
Pat Fabozzi, 83 Pleasant Street, Southampton. I came tonight because I feel very strongly, as a resident of Southampton, the importance of the water and the aquifer. And one of the points that Mark and his team made to us that struck out, struck me very strongly, was that whether you have a well or you're on the town water, we all drink from the same glass. So I think the unity of both communities is absolutely critical. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent.
Okay.
My name is Barbara Walverde. I am a resident of the Lathrop Community on Florence Road in East Hampton and there are five other members of our committee and of our community here, if they would raise their hands tonight. We came, more than five, we came to support this proposal and to give our thanks to those who have worked so hard on it. We also lie on top of the aquifer. We also are working very hard to protect the open space land which drains into the aquifer and we care very deeply about land conservation and about this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Patty Gambirini. I live here in East Hampton and I also facilitate the Barnes Aquifer Protection Committee. And the committee wholeheartedly supports this land protection. What we do on the surface, where we live, really impacts our drinking water supply below and this critical recharge area is especially important in terms of protection. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anyone else from the public?
John Bader, longtime resident, lifelong resident of East Hampton and presently, I'm still president of the Pascama Conservation Trust in town. We all know that the aquifer rests below the Phelps Street area, the whole Lime Street area, Plain section, in other words. It's a forest that mostly scrub oak and pine with a few other species. And back in the early 1970s, something else happened over there that was very tragic. All of a sudden, a giant, gigantic housing project sprung up. Many, many houses, I don't know how many, maybe hundreds, it's all like billions, billions to me when I was there. And anyway, that sort of greatly reduced the ability of the aquifer to recharge itself. And as you know, the glaciers deposited, sediments there and in the right, just the right form and capacity to act as a filter, to act as an easy transporter of rainwater and to hold that water in there. And if we take this Cook Road parcel and we add houses there, that may be the hair that breaks the camel's back, so to speak. So anything we do to save, anything that's over there is worthwhile and necessary, actually. I don't know about you folks, but I like to drink once in a while and I'm not talking about the bottle brew from the packet store, although I do that too. But, no, it's either spending the big money now, which is painful, or going thirsty later on. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone who, anyone else would like from the public would like to address this appropriation?
Hi, my name is Mary Lou Sflane. I live on Treehouse Circle in East Hampton and I have been involved in this project for, for a while as a member of Winding Riverland Conservancy who started the project and working with Kestrel. And I just want to say that I strongly support this project. I've seen all the work that has gone into it, all the negotiation between two towns and I think it's very important to recognize the collaboration between the two towns and support what has been done and to support our aquifer. This summer was so dry and droughty and if anybody has looked at Broadbrook lately, there, it is dry as a bone and so I think it's very important to not draw any more than we have to out as well as have a place for it to recharge. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else from the public who'd like to address council on this appropriation?
Hi, my name is Kay Collins. I'm a, a resident of Carroll Avenue, Southampton, and I just wanted to voice my wholehearted support for this. I feel like not only being beneficial for the aquifer in a sense that we all need drinking water and we all need clean drinking water, but also for local business, you know, we've attracted multiple breweries here, even though I'm going to admit I'm not a beer drinker, but I just want to say that, that, that was a selling point for those businesses and it's, it's been a vibrant part of the local community, so not just for, from a nature and, and water perspective, but also for our local business.
Thank you. Anyone else from public who'd like to address the council? Okay, not seeing any, Councilor Wrist?
Okay. Okay.
Hi, I came in support of this. My name is Fred Andreessen, resident of East Hampton and I just wanted, I didn't know how coming, we give our support other than coming up here, but could I see a show of hands of all the people that came in support of this? Good, that's all I wanted to do.
Always good to have a visual aid.
Everybody okay? Now we can start. A couple of comments. The Finance Committee and myself are very impressed with the vote from Southampton. As we all know, town meeting can be rather rambunctious and to have 174 people vote unanimously on any subject is incredible. The CPA strongly supported this. This is a major tenet of the CPA, open space protection. And as some of you have been around a while know, we have preserved open space in the neighborhood of millions of dollars in East Hampton. A lot of it for this very, not just simply for recreation and open space, but for water preservation. I represent the Plain section of East Hampton and we worked hard with the Board of Public Works to get a sewer system to all of the residents so that septic systems wouldn't drain into the aquifer. This is another step that does that. And the Finance Committee voted three to zero strongly in support of this. So I'm going to read the, the part of the appropriation that deals with this, the Cook County Preservation. The amount requested to be appropriated from the reserve fund of the CPA, $154,212. From the undesignated fund of the CPA, $189,550. To be appropriated to the Cook County Road Drinking Water Supply and Open Space Protection Project for a total of $343,762.50. The amount requested would be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for the Cook County Road Drinking Water Supply and Open Space Protection Project and as established by the CPA Committee's worksheet and contract.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second, to approve the supplemental appropriation of $343,762.50 from CPA for Cook County Road Drinking Water Supply and Open Space Protection. Any additional questions or comments?
Just quick, Joe. Just wanted to point out that there was a good packet of information that went out in preparation for tonight's meeting, but that's a part of our agenda packet for tonight. So anyone at home or who's new to town or wants to learn more, there's a good map in there where exactly this is and all that stuff. So you can go to, they usually have their website and pull that up and take a look at all that.
Thank you.
Okay, Tim?
Very quickly, along those same lines, I had also on my ride home one day seen the signs, so I thought that was a really great technique to be able to see where the land actually is because it's posted by signs saying, "This is the land we're trying to protect." And I just wanted to acknowledge that that was a really great visual.
Okay. Councilor Hayes?
Yeah, to speak to that, I mean, there were so many people in the community, you all showed up, you all showed up here, you've all been working on this. It's really great to see so many people involved in this project. So thank you.
Just wanted to say quickly that this meets the criteria of being open space, water preservation, and leveraging funds, which is always important to me. We have that, that, that option to get additional state funds. It really is a home run for our community. We have the best tasting water in the country, as evidenced by the vote that occurred last year, making the best tasting beer in the country.
All right. Okay. Is there any more comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
I'm a little concerned that our clerk is going to be unhappy that we voted them separately and I should have asked her to separate these, although the request came forward, I guess, for the total. So I am going to reaffirm this with a motion, just in case, that the council approve the total amount of $356,536 to be appropriated to both the City Clerk Vital Records and the Cook County Road Drinking Water Supply for the total of $356,536.50. For the preservation of City Clerk Vital Records Preservation and Cook County Road Drinking Water Supply, I move that we state this in total as well as individually.
Okay, I'm motion a second to do the aggregate total of $356,536.50. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
And I apologize, I'll request in the future that CPA items be separated because they are separate.
Okay, altertated motion to close public hearings.
Subtle.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Back to the agenda. I think we'll do appointments next.
You don't want to talk about a telephone call right now?
You don't want to talk about a telephone call right now?
I will sit your place, Swiss.
Well, because there's nobody out there guarding us, we better do the chief.
Do you want to take a five minute?
Yeah.
Do we have Southampton protected? Well, they're drinking our water.
Okay, so move on, I'm going to go over agenda here, move on to appointments, Counsel Smith.
Okay, thank you. So, the Appointment Subcommittee met earlier tonight. We originally were going to meet downstairs in one of the conference rooms, but because of the very large crowd, we moved up to the chamber. Unfortunately, neglected to videotape that meeting. I don't know if we even could have, but just putting it on record that I would have preferred to have that on record. Counselor Hayes brought up a lot of good points about where we are as a society today, and I really, as we were coming into this interview, it was really interesting to receive this appointment and have so much happen between, hey, we'll meet next week about this appointment to now. So, a lot of our questions to Robert Alberti really focused on a lot of human rights issues within East Hampton. I have a full record of all the questions that we did ask, but we really went pretty completely over talking about the social unrest that's going on, the role of the police in our community, the position on his use of force within the community, and reaching out to oppressed individuals within our community. We also talked about the recent graffiti on Mount Tom and the police's response to that, and how we, how the police department deals with hate crimes. We also talked about the role of social media. And I'm bringing this all up because I think it's important, first of all, that that was a really important public record at this historical time, that you were able to answer difficult questions with absolutely no preparation on your part in terms of me telling you this is what I'm going to ask you. Not that you weren't prepared, that came out wrong. But I think it's important that everybody be aware that the police within East Hampton are also very aware about a lot of the angst that's going on within society and within East Hampton. And very deliberately, we asked questions to address that during our final interview tonight. And I just wanted to make sure that that was acknowledged to all of you here right now, if you weren't able to be here earlier. So, because this is such an important appointment, before moving on to making any sort of motion, I wanted to give the other counselors an opportunity to ask questions.
Okay, why don't we start off in case the captain would like to make a statement?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then we can start with that first.
Sure.
That was a significant, Bob Alberti, police captain here in East Hampton. There's a significant amount of people in the room that are here supporting me, and it really speaks to our organization as a whole, and speaks to our cooperation and partnership, both within the community and in my profession with law enforcement. I'm probably going to miss somebody, but obviously, the East Hampton Police Department, amazing, amazing group of individuals. From the U.S. Attorney's Office, Chief U.S. Attorney Kevin O'Regan is here with Assistant U.S. Attorney Kate Wagner. From Dave Sullivan's office, First Assistant Steve Gagnon is here. From the Hoyok Police, Detective Lieutenant Jim Albert is somewhere here. Of course, Chief McMahon retired now, so I have a lot to blame, you know, on him. From DEA, my old partner, John McGrath, Drug Enforcement Administration. From the FBI, my other old partner, Mark Karangikas. Did I miss anybody? But it's just a testament to Chief McMahon's leadership and allowing us to work hand in hand with our federal and state partners. Speaking of state partners, Captain of the State Police, Chris Wilcox, is also in attendance here. So, that being said, you know, we talked at length about where we are as a society, where we are as a community, and I'll happily address all of those questions if they're to come up again, if any of the counselors had missed that. But for me, and I opened earlier with, this isn't about me, this isn't, it is about me, but it's not, for me, it's not about me, it's about this amazing group of individuals that work very hard for this city, the city government and this community as a whole. As I stand before you, I was thinking about some of the other issues that are going on, and very striking to me was our organization and our police department, your police department, for us, it doesn't matter anything other than the fact that you're a human being. Outside of that, we treat everybody exactly the same, no matter what walk of life you come from. We take great pride in that, we have a diverse department. I'm sad to say that one of our young black officers had resigned for personal reasons, and he's sorely missed, and, you know, hoping to fill that void certainly in our department as far as diversity goes. But, I just wanted to come out front and tell you that a lot of what's going on in the country, a lot of what's going on between the police and the community and other parts of the country and other big cities, we're very fortunate that we have such a partnership and working relationship, and we've built these bridges with this city for many, many years, beyond, you know, my predecessor, Chief McMahon, who really pushed us into the 21st century so that we are where we are. And it's my job now to continue his legacy. It's my job now to support and do everything I can for our officers that work extremely hard for us, and do some amazing work under the most challenging situations that any particular one situation would drive the common person out of policing. And this amazing group of individuals, they do it every single day, every single night, day in and day out, without hesitation, reservation, and they're just, I can't say enough good things about them.
So, are there any questions from the counselors? Counselor Hayes?
Hi, thank you. What is one of the bigger challenges that the police department faces with East Hampton in particular, and how can we support you with that?
One of the, one of the biggest challenges that we're facing currently is our staffing. However, we, you know, we have plans in place to help us address those staffing issues. From a community perspective, the biggest challenge that we have is to get the community to partner back with our police department, as much as we are out in the community, and I don't know if you were here earlier, but I preach community outreach. My boss was on the forefront of community outreach for us here in East Hampton. We're continuing that. So, as I said earlier, as much as, as much as the community expects the police department to be a partner and segue into all of these different venues that the community, you know, because each part of the community has their own agendas. And as much as they want the police to be part of that, we happily will. The bigger issue that we have is getting the community to come back and partner back with the police department. See something, say something. If you need something, tell us. We're here for you, we work for you, and we will do everything in our power beyond the scope of the law in law enforcement. These aren't law enforcement officers, these are, these are police officers. Beyond the scope of the law, we will do above and beyond, and we always have, we always will, well beyond criminal law.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, and we are obviously, sort of repeating myself from our appointments meeting, I was mentioning how impressive your resume, that any city in the country would be honored to have you apply. I was also impressed with you and the previous chief's work on the community outreach with the police, the barbecue, I thought that was a really nice effort. And then also, as I also said, the number of times I've read about incidents in East Hampton that have ended without violence or without anyone getting injured, and I credit you and your team here for the outstanding policing, so thank you.
Thank you. To that end, I'll say, I appreciate that, and I've, several members of media, particularly this week, have asked me, after reviewing my resume and interviewing me, several of them have asked me, why are you still here? And I'm not, I'm not that guy, I'm not a presumptuous guy. The reason that I'm still here is this community and that family all standing in the back row. My family, that's why I'm still here, and I have no desire to go anywhere else. I hope to follow in Chief McMahon's footsteps and retire here.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Erwin?
I just want to say thank you to everybody out there that you keep pointing to. Our police officers are dedicated, and I know that, living at the bottom of the mountain, the gateway, when you get my call at one or two in the morning because somebody out on the corner of East Street and Hoyok Street is having this huge fight, wakes us up from the dead sleep, and I call, and they come and they respond, and people have been long gone, but at least I know that you guys are going to always be there. And you come, you respond, and I'm appreciative of that.
Thank you, absolutely.
Because we have a lot of things going on at the bottom of the mountain, so.
Okay, Counsel Erwin?
Erwin?
I got it.
Yeah.
I know I'm new.
You don't.
I also want to, want to thank both outgoing Chief McMahon and you for your openness as a new counselor to meeting with me and answering all the questions that I have, both difficult and easy. I also want to thank your force because I have, on at least one occasion, experienced and had unexpected counsel on how to drive appropriately in the streets of East Hampton. And I appreciate the counsel, and it was something that I sorely needed. So, I just want to thank you, and also, in your resume, it was extremely, extremely impressive.
Thank you.
And we are very lucky to have you.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Kozinski?
If it could be said one more time, thank you so much to the blue that's here in support of your new chief, I'll be voting for him. Thank you so much for Chief McMahon, for your leadership, for everything you folks do every day. Hold your heads high, be proud. We're proud of you.
Thank you.
And I do question why you're still here, except for them.
Shush. It's the water.
We will not be taking any more questions.
We hope that Hawaii is in your future sometime.
And obviously, with the mayor at my side, I would be very much remiss if I didn't thank the mayor for her leadership for the city, for every department head would say the same, and the amazing opportunity that she's ingratiated upon me. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So as I said before, Appointment Subcommittee before, this is my appointment. I'm very proud to put forth Captain Robert Alberti, now acting, acting chief. It was a pleasure, it's been a pleasure working with our past chief, Chief Bruce McMahon, for 23 years. Our Captain Alberti has an impeccable record as far as our police department, I've said it many times, and I will say it over and over again, they're incredible, they're second to none. You've seen his resume, look at these people, they're all here in support of our new chief, just like they were always in support of other chiefs, because we are a community, and they are community policing at its best. They're everywhere you go, whenever you need them, they are there, no questions asked. So, I find myself, as mayor of a city, to be extremely, extremely lucky and so proud to have a police department like this. It is rare, it is not the common. Every, you know, every community does not have what we have, so I'm very grateful, and I know all of you are too.
Thank you. So this isn't a public hearing, so there really is a public aspect of it, so Counselor Beth, if you want to turn the motion?
Okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for the full council to accept the mayoral appointment of Robert Alberti as the chief of police with a term expiration of 12/31/19.
Second.
A motion second to appoint Robert Alberti, chief of police. Counsel Wrist?
I just wanted to comment how very happy I am that Bob Alberti is going to be our chief. I've had the unfortunate need to have police deal with issues, and the response has made my family personally safer. He personally has helped my family in dealing with issues that I think the entire police force deals with all the time. He has, undoubtedly, by the respect of his officers, he will continue Chief McMahon's concerns for community policing. We coordinate and speak to our community and through our police. One of the things that I've heard that troubles me a little bit is that because he came from the department and he was groomed, which I think is great for the chief's position, that somehow there's some kind of conspiracy to nominate someone who's perhaps not qualified. Anybody out there that can, wants to read this resume and see that he has FBI experience, DEA experience, other jurisdictional experience, I'm so happy you've decided to stay here, and I'm so happy the FBI and the DEA, if you're looking, listening, don't go near him. We want him here. So anybody out there that thinks that we have brought someone from within in some conspiracy because we like the guy, yeah, we do. And he's eminently qualified, so I dare anyone to speak against this appointment to me or anyone without reading this resume, because it's absolutely phenomenal, and I'm so happy he's here. And I just want to thank, thank him personally for all you've done, and I want to say to the entire community who's listening, we have one of the safest communities in East Hampton, both police and fire. I thank you guys sincerely.
Absolutely.
So any more comments before we take the vote? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes. Congratulations.
All right. Who's the fire chief?
Hard act to follow, Jonathan, sorry.
You're all here to support the appointment of the building inspector too, right?
The next mayoral appointment I have for consideration by the full council tonight is Jonathan Flag, who is being, considering, being considered for the appointment as the building commissioner with a term expiration of 12/31/19.
Second.
Okay. Was that a motion?
Not yet. Nope.
Yeah, not yet, I guess I just would like to have the mayor speak, you know, you at appointments, if you just want to make your comments again about Mr. Flag.
Yes, I'd be happy to make my comments again that we made in front of Appointment Subcommittee. Again, you have Jonathan's resume in front of you, he has all the expertise, he's a commissioner, he has experience. I'm thrilled to put his appointment forward, but I do have to make note of, when we were in a time of need here between, you know, having a commissioner out for a while for different reasons, Jonathan was right there, and to come into an office that he hadn't been in before, pick up the slack, just take care of everything, have everything in order, I can't thank him enough. So, I, he was truly welcomed here, and he's earned his place.
Mr. Flag, I guess one of the counselors has a question for you, if you don't mind just coming to the podium.
Mr. Flag, thank you for actually applying for this job, because based on your resume, I'm very impressed, and we're very happy that you've applied, obviously, and I certainly will vote for you, but I'm wondering, what did you see in East Hampton, given your resume, that you found you could do for East Hampton, because you've done so much for other communities? What is East Hampton offering you, and what do you feel you can do for East Hampton? Because you could go anywhere by this resume.
Well, it's, it's a tough question. Ironically, when I first started to become an inspector, when I first started going through the process, East Hampton was the first job I applied for. I, and my predecessor, Joe Fidenkevich, and I were the two finalists. He got the job because he was already certified, I had just started the process. So, shortly thereafter, I was hired in Westfield as a local inspector, and then when my predecessor there... there left his position, I was moved up, and I was a commissioner there for five years. I think I can bring a lot to this city, because I have worked in a somewhat larger city, much more volume. East Hampton puts out about 900 permits a year, whereas Westfield are putting out over 3,000 a year. In Westfield, we were short staffed, did we could, to get the job done. I think I can bring that same energy here. I've had extensive work with doing the budgets and running departments, having staff work under me. In Westfield, I had not only four office staff, but I also had five custodians working under me, so I've had that experience also. I work very well with the police and fire. We all work hard for public safety, for not only the general public, but especially for the kids in the schools. For me, that's of utmost importance. So, I guess from the very beginning, this is where I started, and this is where I hope to end.
Counselor Wrist.
Mister Flag, I just wanted to let you know that I checked in with the building commissioner in Westfield.
I'm aware.
And they gave you the greatest recommendation, the highest recommendation.
That's good to hear.
And they would like to, you know, they certainly were very pleased, and that means a lot. So, I wanted my fellow counselors to know that you're well respected there.
Good to hear. Thank you. Additional questions for the Trump can? Thank you. We usually don't do this, but I think they're important positions and they're new, first time positions, so thank you again for being here for your questions. So, I'll entertain a motion, counselors.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept Jonathan Flag for the mayoral appointment of building commissioner with a term expiration of December 31, 2019.
Second.
A motion, a second to accept Jonathan Flag, building commissioner, term expiration 12/31/2019. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion passes. Congratulations.
I can't talk to you. Good sense of humor.
Thanks a lot.
Glad you have a sense of humor, it's going to be needed.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
You and the health inspector.
Okay, next on our list of appointments to consider, we have David Mottar for the police, I'm sorry, for the fire chief.
That's amazing.
Say your name.
That's the shortest appointment in history.
With a term expiration of December 31, 2019. As we know, this is a reappointment, and did you want to come to the podium to talk?
I was going to say, yeah.
I don't want Chief Alberti out of a job before we even get started.
I will never live that down, I can see it now.
So, before I say anything, I'd like to commend the council on the previous two choices before me. As far as, I was calling him Captain Alberti, because he wasn't really a chief and he wasn't really a captain, it's nice to call him chief, but I'm kind of a quote geek, and one of my favorite quotes is, "Leaders don't create followers, they create leaders." Chief McMahon was a great leader, and he created a leader, and I think the fact that this city kept it in-house speaks volumes for the leadership of the police department. I think as a department head, if your replacement has to come from outside the system, then you've failed. And as far as our new building commissioner, I too made a phone call. Chief Regan loves you, and she actually offered me money to get you to come back to Westfield. Oh, that's right, I wasn't supposed to say that. You're not coming back to Westfield.
Where's the FBI?
As far as my appointment, I think it's fire chief. I'm hoping that it was my additional duties. I really don't have anything unless any of the counselors have any questions.
Oh, I do.
Are you happy?
I'm very happy. And I can tell you, like Chief Alberti, I'm not going anywhere anytime soon with two children in college and one in high school. I am not retiring anytime soon, so you're stuck with me for.
So, that's our job, security.
Yes.
I just want to thank you, I don't know how many people know this, but Chief Mottar is the emergency management officer, is that the right term?
Director.
Director for the community, and when we had our tornado incident, he was vital. When we had the snowstorm that knocked out power for a week, his work, along with the police department, was vital to our community, and I'm very thankful that you're here and your experience continues to help the community. Thank you.
It's looking good for you so far, Dave. I was wondering if you could share with the council what you told me earlier, what appointment you're going to be having, additional position?
Currently, I'm the first vice president for the Fire Chiefs Association in Massachusetts. May 19 of next year, I will be installed as the president of that organization, and the beauty of that is you get to have it in your backyard, so instead of me traveling across Commonwealth, it'll be up at the log cabin. I will only be the second East Hampton chief ever to be president of that organization. Counselor Winnie's probably the only one, been around long enough to remember Chief Olm.
Oh, yeah.
He was the only other chief. Chief Olm was chief for 30-plus years. I promise you, I won't hit that, but.
Chief Plantier took over for him, didn't he? No.
I don't remember, that was long before me. But it's an honor to be part of that organization, and to be selected as president for next year, it reflects on the city as well. Congratulations.
I guess I have one more question for Chief. Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion, Counselor Smith.
I am going to make a motion to accept David Mottar as the fire chief with a term expiration of December 31, 2019.
Second.
A motion, a second to accept David Mottar as fire chief, expiration 12/31/2019.
Just to say, I appreciate, Chief Mottar, I appreciate your quick responses every time we have questions. I know when I call, I get a response and I get a good answer, so thank you so much.
Any additional questions? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
Okay, the next appointment I have is for, oh, yeah.
Why don't you do the next three together?
Okay, the next three appointments are for John Brunner for the historical commission with a term expiration of 12/31/19, Jane Kowalski for the housing authority with a term expiration of 12/31/19, and Keisha Zulo for the national economic pond committee for a term expiration of 12/31/19, and all three of these are reappointments.
Second.
A motion, a second to accept those three previously read mayoral appointments. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
Do you need to make an appointments committee meeting?
We have six new appointments. I just got to pull it up. Do you have the new appointments?
Yes.
How many since I got this?
Sorry. My printer, for some reason, did not print this out. So, I'd like to make a motion to move six mayoral appointments to the appointments subcommittee for consideration. So, I'll read the names, the department, and the term expiration, and do this as one motion. First one is Jay Ryan to the conservation committee with a term expiration of 12/31/19. The second is Daniel Buttrick for the conservation commission, 12/31/19. The next is Jay Ryan for the CPA committee, in parentheses, conservation commission, with term expiration of 12/31/19. The next is John Brunner for the CPA committee, historical commission, with a term expiration of 12/31/19. Marin Goldstein for the energy advisory committee with a term expiration of 12/31/19. And Floyd Hicks for the Main Street Cemetery with a term expiration of 12/31/19.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
A motion, a second to move those six appointments to the subcommittee appointment. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
And I'd like to set our next appointment subcommittee meeting for 5:30 on December 7.
Second.
No, just setting appointments.
And thus concludes.
Okay, thanks. So, I guess back, suddenly in order, public safety, Counselor Hayes.
Yes.
I lost your audience, sorry.
Quite all right. Thank you, Mr. President. So, Counselor Carey and I met last week to talk about the Mobilite pole location cell tower, and in between, my dad called me, in between our last meeting and that subcommittee meeting, we received an email from our city solicitor. So, these Mobilite cell phone towers, they're kind of confusing and they're brand new. They're what's called a small cell cable company, so what they do is they want to build a unique pole to themselves so that they can increase data for some smaller carriers, like Sprint, that don't have the infrastructure that AT&amp;T and Verizon probably has, and it's to kind of beef up strictly data in certain areas. They're kind of a unique, new technology that's happening, and this company, Mobilite, is putting them like all kind of up and down the east coast. Where the problem comes in is they're not actually a utility company, and they're not actually with FCC, and we use telephone poles we own, which is why they keep coming through city council, and we talk about telephone poles an awful lot. They want to build a structure rather than do something that doesn't already exist, like, you know, we're not renting them a smokestack on a mill or anything like that. The drawings that they gave us, and Counselor Carey pointed out that they haven't even done a site visit here, so we had put together like a list of questions, because everything that I had read online and researched, these could be 120 feet tall, and a telephone pole is 60. So, there's no design, there's no real idea where they want to put it, we have to talk about like where the land is, it's a really confusing thing, and a lot of communities are struggling with it. So, I set up an alert for this company to see where it pops up in other communities. We found some information. So, also the Massachusetts Association of City Solicitors, which that's just totally not what it's called, but it's something like that. So, he had gotten an email where they had been talking about it, and they haven't really come up with a determination, kind of because of the FCC regulation that it's not covered under that, and also that, do we own the land, do we not own the land, who owns the pole? There's way too many questions. His recommendation was that we deny the application at this point, and there's a lot of other, I've talked to a lot of city counselors also in Massachusetts that are kind of bumping into this. Nobody's really made any decisions about how to handle this, because it's in a weird area. I think those answers are going to come. Because it was the two of us, we did take a vote to deny the application, but point of order is we were also wondering if we could take it off the agenda without prejudice so that when this individual wants to come up, can we deny the application and take it off without prejudice, or do they have to start from scratch next time?
That's a contradiction in terms.
Correct.
You're prejudicing it by saying that you're going to deny it.
So, what we did.
If I might, I suggest you ask that it be removed from the agenda until which time is they can appropriately apply, because if they haven't given you much information, they haven't done that.
They have given us a ton of information, actually, and filled out the application. So, the city solicitor.
But you don't know where anything is.
Right. We don't have the knowledge to be able, I don't think we actually have the ordinance in place to say, oh, yes, this complies with what this is, because it's federally regulated because it's communications tower. It is city regulated because they want to put up a pole, and is that somehow ours? It is our property. We haven't even done a site visit where exactly they're going to put it or how big it's going to be. So, I don't think we have enough information to approve it, and our city solicitor has said that, you know, to deny it at this point. I just wanted to save the individual from Mobilite, who is this rep who is driving all over the place, going to these meetings and talking to people, from starting all over again.
I don't think he has to. I think you should just ask that it be removed without prejudice, without denying it, because if you deny it, it can't come back to the council for six months by council rule. So, you can, I would suggest, just remove it from the agenda until further information is provided, and then if they provide the information, you can just bring it back.
So, maybe what I might want to do is not do that right now? Maybe I want to discuss that at subcommittee?
Okay.
And see if they want to do that, because I would not want to ding them for six months if I don't have to, but.
Well, if you remove it without prejudice.
But that is what you've suggested I do kind of runs counter to what our city solicitor recommended, so I want to find a balance between those two things, and I think that's better if we discuss it at subcommittee.
Okay, that's your call for sure.
Okay. So, I'm going to leave it on the agenda for now, and then, is that okay with you? Does that make sense? You're the attorney. And we haven't set a, we haven't set a time to meet again.
And then the on-street parking on Pleasant Street?
Ongoing, closer and closer every day.
Okay. All those details.
Thus concludes public safety.
Okay. Thank you. Ordinance, Counselor Wrist.
There was a scheduled meeting last Wednesday for ordinance, however, at the last minute, we received a cancellation notice, and that meeting did not take place. On the agenda, certainly the food truck ordinance and the restricting single-use plastic bags, and I would anticipate that we would meet maybe next Wednesday, but that hasn't been defined, so stay tuned on that.
Okay.
Do you want to do some extensions on some of those?
On the single-use plastic bags, I would ask for 90 days.
In the form of a motion? A motion, a second for 90-day extension on the single-use plastic bags. Just questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
You have a sign ordinance also, 90 days?
Second.
Okay, there's a 90-day extension for this sign ordinance, a motion, a second on that. All those in favor? Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes. While we're at it, we can ask for the food truck, it's only a few days later, but I don't think we're going to need that long, but.
Yeah, but the meeting's scheduled. Second. So, we'll give you it anyway. So, 90 days, whether you want to do, so there's a 90-day extension also on the food truck ordinance. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion passes. Thank you. Property, Counselor Wrist.
No report.
Okay, rules of government relation, Counselor Wrist.
No report, Mr. President.
Okay, and have we taken care of all new business?
Yes, we have.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion, a second for all those in favor? Aye. All, same, motion passes to you, second or second. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.